Hello and welcome to the City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee. Today is the May 7th meeting of this committee, and I am here this evening with Council President Walsh and Councilmember Hall. We have one item on the agenda, and before that, we do have a public comment period. And I will note for the record that there are no members of the public here in council chambers, and I'll check in with Clerk Grabowski if there are any members of the public online.
Chair Hunt, we have new virtual attendees at this time.
Thank you. Then our first order of business is approval of the minutes. These are the minutes of the April 2nd, 2024 council meeting. Do we have any corrections or anything to change? Great. Then move to approve the minutes. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those are approved. So our first and only agenda item this evening is COM 0014, Amendments to Title 18 for Emergency Shelters and Supportive Housing, and this will be presented by Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner. Kristin, you could take it away. Thanks.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner with Community Development, Community Planning and Development Department. Tonight, we are going to review some of the amendments that are required through House Bill 1220, and then ask that you all, if you are prepared to make a recommendation to the full city council. The two questions that we want you to consider while we're going through this is, one, do you all agree with the recent change of removing the operational plans as a requirement for day centers and night shelters? And second, are there additional changes that you would like to see? So House Bill 1220 became, it was adopted and became effective in September of 2021. It says that we must identify capacity for and allow as uses extremely low, extremely low through moderate, low-income housing, emergency housing, emergency shelters, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. It also says that we may regulate reasonable occupancy spacing and intensity of use, but cannot do it, go so far as to prohibit these uses in the city. So on our housing continuum, the amendments that are being addressed here will cover those from, all the way from unsheltered up through subsidized housing. As I mentioned, the bill was adopted in 2021, and we started our comprehensive plan updates in May of 2023, which addressed the comprehensive requirements of House Bill 1220. And then in March, on March 14th and March 28th, Planning Policy Commission saw the Title 18 draft amendments, and then on April 11th, they held a public hearing where they recommended unanimously to approve the amendment. As I mentioned, we started our comprehensive plan. We already had a lot of the policies in there regarding allowing low-income housing, extremely low-income housing and so forth, but we didn't have one about emergency housing and others. So our proposed policies, C5, HC5, says allow emergency housing, day centers, night shelters, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing within, at a minimum, those zones identified by the state. So our definitions, we have, first of all, day center, night shelter, which the state was calling emergency shelters, but when we went to our Planning Policy Commission, it became very confusing to separate those with, what about emergency shelters if there's flooding? And, you know, if there, if it's 114 degrees again and people need people to go, those are two different things. One is intended for the homeless or imminent or about to become homeless, and the other one is just for anyone who needs the help. And for anyone who needs the help for flooding or so forth, that's covered by our emergency management plan. So that's why we changed the name. Plus, when we were speaking with our commissioner who works with Hope Link, she mentioned that that is really what they call these, these different sort of shelters, are day centers and night shelters. So if you're wondering why we changed it, that is why. So the definition is that they are temporary day, temporary day, night, or 24/7 shelters for those currently experiencing homelessness. They may provide access to essential services, and it often includes onsite management, including services to aid individuals to stable, permanent housing. For emergency housing, these are short-term indoor accommodations for those who are experiencing homelessness or those who are at imminent risk of experiencing, of becoming homeless. They also address public or basic health, food, clothing, and personal hygiene needs. It often includes onsite management and to potentially help people find stable and permanent housing. It might, but likely not, require occupants to enter into a lease or agreement to stay Permanent supportive housing is actually for persons living with complex and disabling physical or mental health conditions who are experiencing homelessness or were, again, at imminent risk of homelessness. They do have support services to help people retain their housing if they are currently in housing, improve the resident's health status, and connect the resident with, connect the resident with community-based healthcare treatment or employment services. And lastly, transitional housing provides housing and supportive services to individuals or family experiencing homelessness or about to become homeless for up to two years. These typically do require leases. So instead of showing you the giant permitted uses tables, moving on to Chapter 18, 400, instead of showing you the giant permitted uses table, it's easier to show you in a map. And so here's our map, and this is for day centers, night shelters, and emergency housing. The state requires that those be allowed where hotels are allowed. That's what we're doing. State also requires that transitional and permanent supportive housing be allowed where hotels and wherever single-family houses are allowed, much larger area. And then moving on to 18, 500, we are proposing to add 130 and 120 regarding, so our requirements, day centers and night shelters. One is that the density of a center is limited by the development regulations of the underlying zoning district, and the occupancy we are proposing be limited to a maximum of 50 occupants per center. And we talked with human services and about how it's been going at Motel 6 and sort of what their average is. Their average is about 30 to 35 residents right now. They would love a buffer of 40, and we took that up to 50 because our population's going to grow. But there's also a difference in that, right now, we only have one shelter, and this means that we will likely have more than one shelter. Then lastly, it's the requirements for emergency transitional and permanent supportive housing. It's just for density. The density is limited by the development regulations of the underlying zoning, which a district in which the use is proposed. And I was asked one time, I believe we were asked at one point, does this mean that you can just have, you know, if you're in a single-family residential area, does that mean you can only have one shelter there potentially? But we also have House Bill 1110, which is going to require us to allow up to four units on a prop, on a lot, as long as one of those units is affordable. So there is the potential on one lot to have more. So after our public hearing, our Planning Policy Commission public hearing on April 11th, we did make a few changes. We'd been through this with the attorney a few times, and, but then we were looking at it again, and we decided to remove, so we deviated from the state's definitions a bit because they were so muddled that at our planning, first Planning Policy Commission meeting, that's all we talked about because they were very unclear. So we worked to clear those up a little bit, but we think we went just a little over and made it a little more muddy. So we removed our definition of chronically homeless and disability because those are really already included in the definitions that we have. They were just excessive. Then we also deleted the operational plans requirement for day centers and night shelters. And because funders require that they have operational plans in place, so we removed that. And then we also deleted the word occupancy in 18, 500, 120, where it said density and occupancy, and they will work in accordance with the development regulations. Well, development regulations don't dictate occupancy, so we removed that. That was an oversight. So what's next? We're here. And then on June 3rd, it's proposed that we go to city council for action, and then as far as the rest of House Bill 1220, it would be part of our comprehensive plan adoption at the end of 2024. Our recommendation is that the administration recommends approval, excuse me, administration approval of the proposed amendments to IMC 18, 102 definitions, IMC 18, 402, Table of Permitted Uses, and the additions of sections 18, 500, 120, and 130 to Chapter 18, 500, residential use standards. So again, as a reminder, our questions are, do you agree with the recent change of removing the operational plans as a requirement for day centers, night shelters, and are there additional changes the committee would like to see? And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. All right, now we have a committee question and answer. Anybody have any questions to ask? Council President Walsh.
Thank you. If we do not require an operation plan, and a shelter was built, and we started as a city to experience problems with one particular shelter, what tools would we have as a community and government agency to help resolve those issues? And do we feel like it would be a step back to not have an operational plan that was required by us? It doesn't seem like that is necessarily a tool that we would be using, so are there others?
Excuse me. Those would fall back on the police department and on code enforcement, because if, say, a yard becomes covered in trash, we have code enforcement that says that can't happen. Or if trailers are set up there, that can't happen. That's code enforcement again. If somebody decides for some unfortunate reason, there's some sort of shooting or a fight or something, that's police enforcement. So there are other ways to enforce actions that take place there.
Let me ask it a little bit more specifically. Specifically on a shelter situation, if we were experiencing problems with the shelter management or something like that that was causing a larger problem than just a single, maybe permanent supportive housing unit, are there tools that we have on kind of that agreement if a shelter is already built?
Not that I'm aware of, but I also don't think that those that actually have operational agreements through the funders have that power either. They even, all they're required to do is list who the management is, but we are not able to remove them.
Questions? That's Maureen Rowland.
Thanks in advance for answering some of my questions over emails as well. So the occupancy limit and then also the requirement to comply with the underlying zone for development regulations, we're confident that is on the level with that last bullet point for the 12, House Bill 1220, which said, may regulate reasonable occupancy spacing and intensity of use, but cannot prohibit uses by doing so. We're confident that.
Yes. We initially had in there, we limited it to 50 occupants, but we also initially had a, they couldn't be spaced within a half a mile of each other, and we were talking to Commerce about our proposed amendments, and they wanted us to take out the half mile, but they were fine with the 50, the 50-person cap.
Okay, great. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is the 50 occupancy, is that based completely on the experiences of the city staff and the Motel 6 example?
Yes.
Or are there other things?
Yes.
And then are day, day centers and night shelters, that's one thing, right?
Yes. So sometimes as, so there are some centers that will just be open during the day, and if people need food or counseling or just air conditioning, something like that, they will be open for the day and close at night. Others are just the reverse. They may just be open at night so that people can come in and sleep and get a dinner and have a bed, have a, you know, bed to sleep on. So they operate, and then there you have your 24/7. So there are sort of three different, they operate three different ways.
But the way, the way we have the definitions is one definition for day center slash night.
Correct. Same purpose, potentially different hours.
And then last question is, are we, are we at all concerned about deviating from the state law's definition since we are, we are in this, in this ordinance, we're complying with the state law and trying to specify our specific rules, but it seems like there might be an issue with not, not following the state law?
So we, we submitted, we've talked to the state a couple of times. We submitted it through the state website as well as directly to our state, our state liaison that we work with, and we haven't had any feedback on it. And our definitions have the same intent as those that the state do, so we don't have any concern.
Okay.
At the last Planning Policy Commission meeting on this topic, you had mentioned that like very few cities had actually gone through this process already, like most were already using whatever the state foundation was. So I'm just curious if that's kind of changed since then, if there's anything that we've learned.
The last I heard, I think what I told them is that 255 jurisdictions were supposed to do this. About, I can't remember how many had done it, but only five had done it correctly. So now the state is actually coming up with something that they call STEP, so it just stands for all these different things, and they're being much more detailed on their requirements for these because it just wasn't registering. We think we're okay. We'll see what happens when they come out with their STEP, but with their whole STEP process, but that'll be a little bit. So I don't know if anybody else has adopted since then.
Okay, well, that does lead me to another question. So once you get that guidance, would you, if it were that we were not in compliance with the new guidance, would you then have to bring back an amendment or?
Absolutely, we would do that.
Yes. All right. Any additional questions? I'm seeing any, okay. I will note for the record, there are no members of the public in the audience in council chambers, and I'll check in if there are any members of the public for public comments at this time.
Chair Hunt, we have no members of the public attending virtually at this time.
Okay. I will, I will mention that you can submit written comments at any time to city council at isicawa.gov, and we will move into discussion of this item. I have a few things I can start us off with. So there are a few minor issues in the ordinance. One is, there is one case where it says day centers and night shelters, and then in every other case, it is day center slash night shelter. And it is a little confusing, especially with the explanation that you gave about they do have different hours and so they can be different things. So I think just for consistency, every time it's written, it should be just day centers slash night shelters, or however we want it, however we want to refer to them. Then in the, in the definition of the day center, night shelter, which is the first one that it goes into definitions, it says that, at the end of that, it says, often includes onsite case management, or it says, lists things it has, and then it says onsite case management, and then it says, and often includes onsite case management. So it has onsite case management twice. So I can probably clarify that. And, go ahead. Oh, and then just inconsistent, inconsistent capitalization of day center and night center or night shelter again, that's just a consistency thing. And, oh, one more. So under transitional housing, the, the way it's written, it has, so transitional housing, it says, means a project that provides housing and supportive services to individuals or families experiencing homelessness or are at imminent risk of becoming homeless for up to two years. So I think what it means is that the housing is for up to two years, but the way it's written, because it has the up to two years at the end, it sounds like they are at risk of becoming homeless for up to two years. So I think you could just rearrange that sentence, and that would be a little bit clearer. And then I think the only real question I have as far as the, beyond those clarifications is around the 50 occupancy. I am, I, I think the rationale about that you would be required by organizations to do the operational plans anyway is, is, is a good rationale, and so I, I am supportive of not additionally requiring that from our side. The, the only question I really have is about the 50 people and if the experience of the Motel 6 as a gauge, if that is the best possible gauge. So would be, would welcome my fellow councilmembers' thoughts on that point. It seems like that is partly due to the fact that the motel only has so many rooms and, you know, our staff is a certain size and things that it might be different if it were an emergency shelter. And so I'm not, yeah. So I think maybe the occupancy, it would be good to know if there are other shelters in the region about that size or things like that. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, well, first, definitely no problem at all with the clarifications that Chair Hunt brought up. Those are some like good things to look into. I was actually going to bring up the occupancy limit as well, and maybe in just in terms of something to keep our eye on as kind of the market for these kinds of shelters evolve in the Isicua area, because I would hate to have, I mean, if the Department of Commerce didn't have any problem with it, I'm fine with it for now, for sure. But definitely something I'd like us to keep an eye on if that needs to change in the future, and it sounds like it could be an easy amendment in the future if we need to, or a good policy conversation to have at the very least. I think overall, this strikes a pretty good balance between like what's required of us and also making sure we're doing what we can to help people in need in our community. I think the Planning Policy Commission had a really thoughtful questions and comments on this, a really excellent conversation around the operational plans in particular, got really into the weeds on the operational plans. And I completely understand those that might want to have required it to ensure success of the model or to ensure, what was brought up earlier, if an issue arises, we have some sort of mechanism to deal with that. But it sounds like we do have, well, it sounds like the funding pathway in and of itself is a mechanism already that exists, and then of course, we have our code enforcement, law enforcement there as well. So, and so I think the argument for removing it is more, is more compelling. I think it's also important to listen to the Department of Commerce, avoid liability whenever possible, and stay in our lane, or I think it's good for us to focus on, on what the city does and let the other partners who are involved with producing these kinds of facilities focus on what their role is. So I think staff have, have found the right balance here. And then, yeah, the only other thing was about occupancy, just keeping our eye on that. Otherwise, no additional changes I'd like to see.
Council President Walsh.
Thanks. Going on that occupancy idea, I forgot to ask what the occupancy is of the Snoqualmie shelter.
I don't know what it is for Snoqualmie. I know that the men's shelter over at East Gate allows for 92 men. Their Bellevue is capping theirs at 100 per center. Some are not putting caps, but they're putting on very large distances, so say a mile or so within each other, so they vary, but I don't know what Snoqualmies currently is.
Okay. I think that would be an interesting one for me just because, you know, we're different from Bellevue. I think the 92 occupancy and the 100 cap there is a good reference point, but also seeing what it is on the other side, I think would be useful. I think I had many of the same thoughts about occupancy, which is, I don't want, I don't want a number that we have pulled out of kind of what our need is and our staff's experience and our current size and all of that. I don't want our reasoning there to block the development of something that would help our residents. And so if there is any concern that, you know, somebody couldn't get a fund, couldn't get funding for a shelter unless they were going to be able to cover a certain number of beds, which would give them a certain amount of, you know, state funding, that would be my only concern there. So if there's any other information that we've heard from any other shelters of, hey, we had to hit this size in order to have effective funding, I think that would be useful. Beyond that, I also don't have a problem with removing the operational plans. I think the explanation of both the funding group requiring that and also the fact that we have code enforcement and law enforcement as options there really does help clear any concerns there. So it sounds like that's very well thought out. I think my thought in looking at the difference between the day center, night shelter map and the permanent supportive housing and transitional housing is just, maybe we've gone a little bit too small on the day center, night shelter. In particular, I was looking at places like mixed-use residential, multifamily high, multifamily medium, urban village, multifamily, just because those are some of our denser areas, they're going to be more likely to be served by transit, which would be a super help to that population. So I think I would just put it out there a little bit of, maybe there are a few more areas that we might want to consider. If nobody feels like that's a good idea, I'm certainly fine. I think we have done a wonderful job of growing it beyond what we are specifically required to do, and I think it represents our recognition of we have a community that needs to be served, and serving them within the community is the best way to do that. So that's my thought.
I was searching, I found one reference that says the Snoqualmie Valley Shelter serves 10 adults year-round and can expand to 15 beds. Well, and this was not on the, this was not their site, this was a different site, so. Okay.
I mean, you all discussed with the human services staff that knows this business a lot more in terms of what's the right size, because even for the residents, having a larger facility doesn't, can be a little bit, you know, having toured some of these shelters in, in the past, there is that to be managed well and, and to provide the services for the residents. It can be a huge facility because it, it has to be really well-run for it to.
So you have any proposed changes or?
I think I just, there were a few areas that I would consider appropriate for day center and night shelter, which is the mixed-use residential, multifamily high, and multifamily medium, and urban village, multifamily. So would it be possible to bring up the slide that has, or the map of particularly the transitional and permanent supportive housing? Yeah. So if I'm looking at multifamily high, it's kind of a dark brown, down, puke brown. I don't, I don't know what these colors end up being. Yeah.
Down off a front.
Yeah, down off a front, and then there's a little bit right at the roundabout on East Lake Samamish Parkway. So that's one area that I had listed out, and then multifamily medium is a little bit more scattered through in different areas. So that's another one. And then urban village, multifamily is mostly in the Highlands and Talis and just certain areas, so.
So are you proposing that, so this is where, this map here is where transitional and permanent supportive housing are currently allowed. Are you proposing that we consider the day and night shelters?
Yeah. So if you go over to the day and night shelters map, you can see it's far fewer, and so the areas that I was mentioning, I think would also be appropriate to be, to allow day center and night shelters. And I'm really not at the point of proposing, I'm. And I'm really not at the point of proposing, I'm more just seeing what people's thoughts are, or if staff have any concerns with that idea.
Yeah, maybe I can help you kind of think, think it through. So the reason why we didn't pick that was because hotels are not currently allowed in those zones. And all along with the Planning Policy Commission, we've been very clear about what the state mandate is, and this is following that. If we want to go above and beyond that, then we should probably notify the property owners and, and others, because we, you know, that's a policy thing that the city is doing to expand it in more areas, which we followed all the public outreach through the Planning Policy Commission, but they were very, I mean, this is something the city has to do. Going above and beyond certainly is your, you know, if that's the direction, then we should, we should be doing a more robust public outreach so that property owners know that this is proposed.
I, that's really good feedback, because I certainly don't want to blow anything up, and I do think that what staff has proposed is adequate. And if we wanted to live with this and see if there are limitations of it and then potentially add in the future, I would be perfectly comfortable with that. I just, I think there are certain opportunities, just make sure that we're addressing the needs of our community.
Councilmember Hall?
Actually, you've brought up a really good question. Is there a way for us to know, I mean, I, number one, I agree with just kind of staying focused on what's required of us first, especially because we've already done all this work and the public hearing's been conducted. But is there a way for us to know in the future if developers come in and said, ooh, I want to build a day center here, but finds out it's not allowable because hotels aren't allowed in that particular property? Is there a way for the city to know that that might be happening frequently and we might want to reexamine the policy or?
Yes. I mean, because, well, developer, they probably won't, they may not ask because they generally go to our code first and see what's allowed where. So they may not. But still, people come in and they say, can we expand this? And when they do it, they talk to our current planners or they talk to economic development. So it is, it is possible that we would hear that people are looking to do it in zones that don't allow it currently.
So if a church wants to set up a shelter, a day center on their existing property, is that problematic?
You're talking about this church on East Lake Samamish Parkway?
Oh, not necessarily in a particular church, I'm just thinking as a potential service provider.
Right now, if they're located in any of these zones, no, that's not an issue.
Yeah, if they're not in one of these zones.
Then yes, that would be, that would be problematic. Not problematic, it just wouldn't be allowed.
But at the same time, this is, it's the second map, correct? Not the map that's on the screen? This is, this is day/night, the supportive services is the other map.
No, this is the one, they're talking, they're talking about day centers and night shelters. So this is the correct map.
Okay. I thought I heard you say just if a church wanted to have services.
No, I'm saying provide services through a day, day center or night shelter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the other, the daytime services is, is the vast majority of the community.
Yeah.
What was the, could you, could you summarize the state's rationale for the hotels specifically for the day centers and night shelters, linking those two?
State didn't provide rationale.
Okay.
But I, I do know that the county has gone out and bought hotels for that sort of purpose, and that may well be the reason behind it.
And I think that's a pretty reliable guess on Kristen's part. I mean, the context of this is that there are large numbers of communities in the state that want none of this. And so that is why the state had to act. And I think that, you know, taking a path of least resistance, you already have a zone where you can have a hotel, you're already having, you know, 18, 24-hour-a-day activity, it's likely already around compatible uses. And so I think that's just the path of least resistance for those communities who have said, hell no, we don't want any of this in our, so. And I think as you have all mentioned this evening, you know, you know, this, this makes sense for us at this time. If it doesn't make sense over time, this council has the ability to amend the code. The other piece I'll add, since I have the floor, is I think the state Department of Commerce is still sorting through this. And, you know, it would certainly be the administration's recommendation not to get too far afield at this juncture until this shakes out. I think we're very proud to be in the forefront of this, but six months from now, it could look different. And we may then have to go back anyway, for no cause of our own, to revisit this. So I think having this on the books moving forward, complying as we know compliances today is good for Isicua, and then as time passes, make changes.
I have, I have one more question. You mentioned earlier that you, I thought you, I thought you mentioned that you removed the, the word emergency housing, or you were, because that was confusing with housing or with shelter that was available for emergencies. But it is still here. So is it because it's emergency housing versus emergency shelter?
They're, they're two different, they're two different things. So the emergency shelters, which we're now calling day shelters, night centers, are more temporary. So even if that is a 24-hour thing, people still have to pick up their things and take it out of the shelter during the day. They're not allowed to leave their belongings there. They don't get a room that is assigned to them, they have a bed that they can sleep on in a much larger, in a community setting. The emergency housing is still there. That is a longer-term situation in which people get rooms, they're assigned rooms, they keep their things there, that becomes their own space for a period of time.
I think the length of the stay for emergency housing is 60 days, if I'm not mistaken. So it's still temporary emergency, emergency housing, but it is a, you can stay for 60 days, whereas the shelter is only 24 hours. We can look into that, but that's my understanding.
Okay. Okay. In the definition, it says short-term.
Yeah, the state's definition was short-term. They didn't provide specific hours in this form. I can go back and look and see if there's something previous.
Okay. Well, so do we want to, so we have, we've answered the first question, which is that we're fine with the not requiring our own operational plans. Do we want to propose any other changes? Just keep an eye on what the state is doing?
Yeah. I appreciate City Administrator Bob Kowitz mentioning that, yes, we are ahead and we are proud of that opportunity to be able to act on something that the state passed and gave, gives us an opportunity to also serve our residents, but also the caution of, hey, we may have to redo this if the state gives any adjustments. So I'm comfortable going ahead with this proposal. I would be interested at some point to just kind of talk to some of the churches about whether this would be something they would feel as a limitation for their ability to serve residents. And if that is the case, you know, something that we might think about doing while also waiting and seeing what the state has to say about the legislation as well.
Sure, we can, you know, keep engaged with, one of the churches that came to council for rezone, you know, they were looking at some sort of like affordable housing projects and things like that, but for the temporary shelters, the tent city, for instance, but it's a temporary use, it's not there forever, so that is handled through a different provision of just a temporary use, not temporary stay. So that's an opportunity for churches to participate in if they are interested. But for the, the neighbors around it, they understand that it's temporary, it's three months and then that'll go, as opposed to a permanent, which then I think is also not just from a church's perspective and, and from the need of serving and all that, but also the property owners around, those, you know, viewpoints.
I think if I understood the earlier definitions too, the tent city, if you're staying multiple days, that wouldn't be the day, day center, night shelter, that would be one of the other forms of housing, so emergency housing.
Yeah, it would be a permitted use rather than a permanent use, right?
So, yeah, I, I think in the past, we had a tent, we had, a church did have tents there. They do stay overnight, they don't have to remove their things. I think that one might be a special use permit, but I'd have to look into it. That one is a special use permit.
We treat it as a special use permit, yeah.
Here, the last six, nine months was a special use.
Do we have any other changes or things we would like to look at? Okay. Okay, great. Well, thank you for, thank you for your presentation. Do you have what you need on these two questions?
One last question, consent or regular before the full?
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
I would be fine with a going-on consent if we're able to capture this kind of policy question about going above and beyond in the agenda bill, just so the other council members kind of know that we, that's some kind of outstanding question that somewhere in the future we might want to approach.
Okay. I can also, I can also be sure to mention that in my readout when it, when it's on consent. Do that as the committee chair. Okay. So consent. All right. Okay. Great. So that was our only item of business. Thank you again. And are there any announcements? There being no further business. This meeting is adjourned at 7:12 PM. Thank you.